For a written transcript of this meeting, or if you need reasonable accommodations, including this communication in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the clerk to the commission's office at 404-612-8232.
All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the first regular meeting of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners today of April. Today is April 2nd, 2025. It is 10:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chairman Rob Pitts.
Present.
Commissioner Bridget Thorn.
Present.
Vice Chairman Bob Ellis.
Present.
Commissioner Dana Barrett.
Present.
Commissioner Mo Ivory.
Present.
Commissioner Marvin Arrington Jr.
Present.
Commissioner Khadijah Abdul-Rahman. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation, followed by their pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we give you thanks for this day, for your continued grace and mercy upon our lives. We pray now your blessing upon those who are present, lest our commissioners give me your leadership and your wisdom. It is your name that we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Continue, Madam Clerk.
On page 2, Consent Agenda. 250224, Adoption of the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the county commission and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion will take place on these items. If discussion of any consent agenda item is desired, the item will be moved to the first regular meeting agenda for separate consideration. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Commissioner Ivory has requested to move two of her board appointments.
What page?
On page 2, 250226, the Fulton DeKalb Hospital Authority, and on page 4, 250230, Fulton County Homeless Continuum of Care. She will bring these back at a later date.
Okay. Commissioners? All right. You entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. All right, motion to do so by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Thorn. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. On page 9, First Regular Meeting Agenda. 250253, Adoption of the First Regular Meeting Agenda. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have two items to be revised, starting on page 10. 250258, Request Approval. This item is not a renewal. This item has been requested to be updated to update the requested action. Request Approval of Cooperative Agreement to Provide Temporary Staffing Services in an Amount of $246,480. On page 12, Public Works. This item was revised to include a not-to-exceed amount of $794,000.
Which item?
250266, Request Approval of a Recommended Proposal for the Progressive Design Bill for Johns Creek Environmental Campus Membrane System Replacement.
And what's the change?
They added a not-to-exceed amount of $794,000.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, Commissioners, any items? All right, motion to adopt as amended. Motion to do so by Commissioner Thorn is seconded by Commissioner Abdul-Rahman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 250254, Ratification of Minutes. First Regular Meeting Minutes, March 5th. Second Regular Meeting Post-Agenda Minutes, March 19th, 2025.
All right, motion to ratify by Vice Chair Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Thorn. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 250255, Presentation of Proclamations and Certificates. First proclamation is recognizing Best Academy Varsity Boys Basketball Championship Appreciation Day, sponsored by Full Board of Commissioners.
Okay. We had another stellar year in Fulton County in basketball. We got five champions. Three are here today. And at our next meeting, Holy Innocence, boys and girls won, but they could not be here today. But they'll be here at the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, I don't believe Best is here yet. We may want to move to the next one.
Sir?
I don't believe Best Academy has arrived yet. We may want to move to the next one.
Okay, the next proclamation is recognizing Tri-City's High School Varsity Boys Basketball Championship Appreciation Day, sponsored by-
We're trying-
-Full Board of-
Tri-City and all of their guests, please come down. And some of you all come to the right of me, please. No, this is the chairman did this. It is with great honor this morning that we celebrate this wonderful, wonderful group of individuals, young men of color, doing it in the state of Georgia and out. Before I get into the official proclamation on behalf of our chairman and my colleagues, on a personal note, I want to say when you see images daily, Chairman, of negativity, when you see images that berate and belittle our young black men. I am so proud to see these coaches. I'm so proud to see this staff. I'm so proud to see these young men who are making their mark. As I get into the proclamation, whereas the Tri-City's 2025 Boys Basketball Lineup of Champions include, give me grace on these names, Quintavian Thurman, Trey Keith, Corbin Wilburg, Carby Martin, Dylann Johnson, Andrew Jones, Khalid Jones, Jalen Wingfield, Chris Cottle, Kamari Greer, Sean Van Dorn, Lonnie Brown, and John Morris. And whereas on Friday, March 7th, 2025, at the Macon Coliseum in Macon, Georgia, the Tri-City's Bulldogs defeated the Woodward Academy War Eagles to win the Georgia High School Association Class 5A Boys Basketball State Championship. You can clap for that. You don't have to wait to the end. And whereas the Bulldogs easily, listen to that, the Bulldogs easily outscored the War Eagles with a strategic teamwork and key plays by Trey Keith with 14 points. Trey, raise your hand. We want everybody to know who you are. Sean Van Dorn with 18 points and six rebounds. Sean, raise your hand. Carbin Martin with nine points. Raise your hand. And Jalen Wingfield with 20 points and 18 rebounds, which earned him the Morgan &amp; Morgan Most Valuable Player Award. And whereas the Tri-City's Bulldogs won the championship game with a 66-55 score over Woodward Academy. And whereas, under the leadership of their fearless head coach, Omari Forts, the Bulldogs' championship win was the third title in the last seven years, winning in 2019 and 2022. It is with immense pride that now therefore be resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners congratulates the Varsity Boys Team at Tri-City's for their outstanding season and teamwork that propelled them to the Georgia Class 5A State Championship Title and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025, as Tri-City's High School Boys Varsity Basketball Championship Appreciation Day in Fulton County, Georgia. Can you please put your hands together for these wonderful, wonderful young men? So Chairman, did you?
No, I'm at the game.
I know you was at the game, Chairman. I saw you in the stands. Coaches, did y'all want to take a moment to say a few words? Please grace us with your wonderful fearless leadership.
Thank you. First and foremost, I'd just like to say a special thank you to my administrative team that is here, Coach Cipio and our principal, Dr. Managor. They consistently set expectations that we do our best to absolutely maintain and uphold and be examples of. Thank you all for the opportunity to recognize these young men and their accomplishments as we are consistently mentoring to them about what it means to be a champion and not just about sports, just being a championship mentality as it relates to being a man, a father, a husband, and a citizen. So thank you for recognizing us. We do not take this for granted and we appreciate your time and energy and efforts. It is my distinct pleasure as the District Commissioner of Tri-City's to welcome you all here, to congratulate you on a great season and to tell you that we are so proud of all the work that you have done and the great things that you have done. But as I told you upstairs, we continue to expect great things from you. This is just the beginning. And in order for us to move Fulton County forward as one Fulton, we have to rely on the next generation of leaders like these young men. Our children are 50% of our population, but they are 100% of our future. And so we are relying on you all to be the next generation of leaders. Thank you for your service and thank you for the great work that you've done. But we want you to continue to do that work and that message goes for all of our young people today. Continue to shine. Continue to do what you have been doing. Thank you.
Can we get the MVH to stand up here next with you? Jalen? Can you come stand up here next to the coach, please?
All right, shall we come in just a little bit?
The next proclamation is recognizing Best Academy Varsity Boys Basketball Championship Appreciation Day, sponsored by the Full Board of Commissioners.
Yes. Come on down, Best Academy. Looking so nice this morning. Yes. Good morning, good morning. Thank you. All right. Move back. One this way, one that way. Yep. All right. Yes. All right, welcome, Best Academy. The Best Academy 2025 Boys Basketball Lineup of Champions includes Zion Evans. Raise your hand when I say your name. Jacob McKell, Nicholas Dozier, Alexander Barrett, Mario Lemons, Joshua McKell, Wendell Brown Jr., and Curtis Martin. All right. Whereas on Saturday, March 8th, 2025, at the Macon Coliseum in Macon, Georgia, the Best Academy Eagles Boys Varsity Basketball Team defeated Southwest Macon to win the Georgia High School Association Class A Division I Boys Basketball State Championship. And whereas, the Best Academy Eagles gained an early lead in the first quarter of the game, but were quickly outscored by the Southwest Boys in the second and third quarters. And whereas, the Best Academy Eagles stepped up their defensive game in the final quarter and outscored their opponents to win the championship game with a 62-57 score over the Southwest Boys. Yes. And whereas, under the leadership of their fearless head coach, Brian Whedon, the Eagles' championship win was the pinnacle of a memorable season and the school's first ever championship trophy. All right. Now therefore, yes. The first championship is always important. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners congratulates the Varsity Boys Team at Best Academy for their outstanding season and teamwork that propelled them to the Georgia Class A State Championship Title and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025, as Best Academy Boys Varsity Basketball Championship Appreciation Day in Fulton County, Georgia. Where's our coach? Coach, you want to come up and? Oh, you're right here.
First of all, we-
I mean, what were you feeling when you were down and then you came right back up in that fourth quarter?
Well, you know, we really, you know, thought we'd win. You know what I mean? Like, the guys work hard. But I just want to say thank you to, you know, for inviting us. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity. Thanks to our Black Director, Coach Moore, and our administrators. Thank you to the resource officers because it was a record number in the building and we had to come outside with that. You know, cars were parked in front of us, behind us, beside us. But, you know, all the little people that helped hold us down. Thank you to my, you know, my assistants and these players. But, you know, as Best Young Men, I'm leaning on what Coach Fort said. But, you know, we teach life skills and APS wants us to be college and career ready. And I think that's what, you know, we're trying to do for our student athletes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The last proclamation is recognizing Creekside High School Varsity Girls Basketball Championship Appreciation Day, sponsored by the Full Board of Commissioners.
All right, ladies. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Someone come on this side, please. Can we get someone to fill in? Thank you.
All right. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Let's get a couple more on this side, please. All right. We got two South Fulton teams, and I guess really three. We're proud of all of these Fulton County teams. But I happen to serve as the commissioner in the district for Creekside and so happy to be able to celebrate these young ladies today, young women. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Creekside High School Girls Basketball Lineup of Champions includes Alicia Johnson. Raise your hand, please. She's not here, all right. Camille Forts, Cindia Dennis, Danielle Butler, Emanuel Abah, Kiana Harvey, Leah Moore, Malaya Harris, Malia Harris, Reli Roberson, Riley Roberson, Sidney Hunter, J.C. Mitchell, and Sky Cleveland. And whereas, on Thursday, March 6th, 2025, at the Macon Coliseum in Macon, Georgia, the Creekside High School Girls Varsity Basketball Team defeated the Jackson Atlanta Jaguars to win the Georgia High School Association Class 4A Girls Basketball State Championship. And whereas, the Creekside Seminoles and the defending champions ended the first quarter tied 9-9. But the Seminoles turned up the heat and led by five points at halftime. And whereas, the Creekside Lady Seminoles stepped up their defensive game in the final quarter and outscored their opponents to win the championship game with a score of 57-37. And whereas, Creekside Guard and the Region's Player of the Year, Cindia Dennis, led her team with 22 points, five rebounds, six assists, and three steals. J.C. Mitchell scored 14 points and Leah Moore defended her team with 10 rebounds. And whereas, under the leadership of their fearless head coach, Akima Ellis, the Seminoles' championship win was the pinnacle of a memorable season and they are the only 4A team in the state, boys or girls, to have an undefeated season. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners congratulates the Varsity Girls Team at Creekside High School for their outstanding season and teamwork that propelled them to the Georgia Class 4A State Championship Title and does hereby proclaim today, Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025, as Creekside High School Girls Varsity Basketball Appreciation Day in Fulton County. Let's give them a big round of applause. Coach?
First, I want to thank you all for having us.
First, I want to thank you all for having us. We were very grateful for this opportunity. I also want to thank the hardest-working lady, A.D. in the land, Dr. Maquia Troy. Y'all have no idea what this lady does for athletics at our school. I would also like to thank our principal, Dr. Awok, the trainers, our managers, our team managers. I want to thank these girls for trusting in us, coaches, and believing in us and believing in themselves. As you guys know, the viewership for girls' women's basketball has increased significantly within the last few years. And I'm proud to say that I got some dogs with me. Like, some girls that are really like, they're worth the watch, they're worth the travel, they're worth buying a ticket and coming out to see. So look forward to more success in the future, and thank you all.
All right, Madam Clerk, continue.
On page 10, Public Hearings, 250256, Public Comment. Citizens wishing to participate in public comment will be allowed to appear in person or may choose to participate virtually via Zoom video conferencing or by submitting their comments in writing by registering on the county website, www.fultoncountyga.gov. Priority for public comment will be given to Fulton County citizens and those individuals representing businesses or organizations located within Fulton County. Speakers will be granted up to two minutes each. The public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed 60 minutes. In the event the 60-minute time limit is reached prior to public comments being completed, public comment will be suspended and the business portion of the BOC meeting will commence. Public comment will resume at the end of the meeting. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we will start with the speakers here in Assembly Hall. We have received two speaker cards. Will both speakers please come forward? Jay Wesley Day and Walter Reeves.
Go on.
Good morning. My name is Jay Wesley Day. I rise simply to ask for justice. We're approaching seven years since I was beaten into a coma on Edgewood Avenue, and no one has yet to be prosecuted. I ask you to ask yourselves, if I slapped and beat any one of you, would it take seven years? I doubt it. So I should be given the same privilege as each of you would be given. If you, I know some of you think I'm trouble, but please think I'm good trouble, because I just simply want justice. I still rise above the discrepancies and the retaliation and the abuse of power of Keith Gammich and the Fulton County Judicial Officers. As you know, Keith Gammich charged me with a misdemeanor. He upgraded that misdemeanor to a felony. I lost my job at Delta Airlines, but still I rise. I was at the Cheesecake Factory waiting on food, $100 order from me and my incapacitated mother that I take care of. I was charged with trespassing, but Keith Gammich waited a year later and added obstruction to justice, not telling me, causing me to lose my job at Delta Airlines a second time. But still I rise. Out of retaliation, three Fulton County judges-
15 seconds.
After me taking a $4,000 loan from Invest Atlanta for my restaurant in 2010, they go into my account and my mother's bank account and take thousands of dollars. But still I rise.
Walter Reeves, Workers' Representative, Atlanta Mayor candidate. I am here regarding the ongoing crisis at the Social Security Administration. Many of you might be familiar with that and familiar with the name of Martin O'Malley, the former governor of Maryland and the Social Security Administrator during the Biden Administration. He now has a warrant that the system will go down in the next 30 to 90 days. This is not due to incompetence, but it is by design. And the policy unfortunately now is FDR in reverse. And that will cause significant hardship here in the city of Atlanta in Fulton County, and people need to start being prepared for it. Many of you will have to personally financially support your relatives that are on Social Security. And as public servants, you should try to raise the food bank, quadruple the amount of food in the food bank. And we are grateful for y'all. And I do, however, have some good news to report, and that is regard to Judge Cassandra Kirk. Some officials at the City of Atlanta have graciously decided to help her in regard to finding some staffers through the Atlanta Workforce Development Program. And so that is, this promise of cooperation is a modest public policy success on my part. And we are grateful for y'all here, and God bless y'all.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we do not have any speakers on Zoom today, so no further speakers.
It's a record. All right. Thank you. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Continuing on page 10, County Managers Items Under Open and Responsible Government, 250257, Finance. Presentation, Review, and Approval of the April 2nd, 2025 Budget Soundings and Resolution.
All right, Madam CFO.
She's not here. There's morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, Commissioners. We have two items on the soundings agenda. One is a vendor name change, and that will be for eCivis Company. This is a software company that is providing us the software that we use to track new grants. They're changing their name from eCivis to EU now. And the other one is a spending authority increase from $600,000 to $755,646. This will be for a company named She. This is a company that is providing server virtualization software for our IT department. Those are the two items that we have on the agenda, and we seek your approval for this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? I have a motion to adopt by Vice Chair Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 250258, Finance, as amended, request approval of a cooperative agreement in the amount of $246,480 to provide temporary accounting staffing services.
All right, motion to approve by Vice Chair Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 250259, Human Resources Management, request approval of a recommended proposal in an amount not to exceed $109,796 to provide comprehensive FMLA administration.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. On page 11, 250260, Information Technology, request approval to extend an existing contract for Office 365 Implementation Services at no additional cost.
All right, motion to adopt by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, seconded by Commissioner Dana Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 250261, Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval of the lowest responsible bidder for renovation of airport administrative air in the amount not to exceed $2,389,000.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Ivory, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 250262, request approval of the lowest responsible bidder for janitorial services for selected Fulton County facilities in a total amount not to exceed $1,306,000.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 250263, request approval of recommended proposal in total amount of $608,877 to provide bus and shuttle services for Fulton County employees and jurors.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. On page 12, under Health and Human Services, 250264, Senior Services, request approval to increase the spending authority for swimming pool maintenance services in the amount of $94,700.
Motion to adopt by Commissioner Ivory, seconded by Commissioner Thorne.
Question, Mr. Ellis, Vice Chair Ellis. Quick question. Would this enhance the level of service, or is this more just to, you know, deal with increasing costs on it?
Thank you for the question, Vice Chair. This is to pay for an increase in services that were provided related to repairs.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Arrington.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm glad to see this because I've been getting calls about the pool over in East Point at the Bowden Center.
Yes, sir. We are in the planning stages of getting all of those repairs done. Some of the issue has been supply chain, not having the adequate materials available in a timely manner to get the repairs in place timely. But the staff is continuing to stay on top of that, and I will provide an update regarding the timeline for when you can expect those repairs to be completed.
Thank you. And I think it's important that we communicate that timeline to the people that use the center on a daily basis, right? It's good for me to know, but it's more important that the people that use the pool know.
Yes, sir. I'll make sure that happens.
Thank you.
Wanted to add something? All right. I'm sorry. Mr. Thorne?
What are the facilities, the four facilities that have swimming pools?
We have four multipurpose, Liddy Sony Log with Director, Senior Services, the Dorothy C. Benson Multipurpose Facility, HJC Bowden in East Point, the Harriet G. Darnell in Atlanta, and the Halina S. Mills Senior Multipurpose Facility in Atlanta.
All right, motion to adopt by Commissioner Ivory, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 250265, Public Works, request approval to increase the spending authority in amount not to exceed $363,270.60 to provide valve condition assessment services.
I have a favorable motion by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, seconded by Commissioner Ivory. Please vote.
And the motion passes unanimously. 250266, request approval of a recommended proposal for the Progressive Design Bill for the Johns Creek Environmental Campus Membrane System Replacement with a not-to-exceed amount of $794,000.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six shades, zero nays. 250267, request approval of the lowest responsible bidder for Runway 826 Payment Rehabilitation in an amount not to exceed $2,482,900.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. Under Justice and Safety, 250268, Police, request approval to utilize corporate purchasing for inspection and repair services for a helicopter in the amount not to exceed $450,000.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Ivory, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. On page 13, Commissioners' Action Items, 250216, request approval of a resolution consenting to and ratifying the use of existing Fulton County Everlorn Property Tax Increment for three projects located in West Side Tax Allocation District 1, sponsored by Commissioner Barrett.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Arrington. Commissioner Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to offer up a substitute motion to hold. There were a couple of things that I was interested in sitting down and learning a little bit more information about. Number one, on the three-and-a-half-million-dollar project itself, to really understand the viability of that project and the ability to actually sort of see it through and actually have its level of impact. But secondarily, there was some information that I asked for County Attorney Staff to provide us some research on. And I know they're still in process on that and don't have that fully done. That's the main reason to ask for the hold on that. And these projects come to us because we extended these TADS, I guess via some sort of resolution back in the 2007 timeframe or something like that, 2005, 2008, somewhere in that period of time. And within that agreement to extend it, this provision kind of came forth where the projects had to come to us for, you know, individual approval as opposed to the way they traditionally flow through in a traditional TAD, where we don't have that provision. And I want to have some sort of understanding of what that process meant in terms of whether we, if we were to say no to it, what it would mean, number one, for the project, and what it would also mean for the increment that we, you know, flow into this. Does it revert back to us, you know, et cetera? So I'd ask for County Attorney's Staff to do some research on that. And I know they haven't completed that yet. Thus, the request to hold.
All right, substitute motion to hold. Is there a second? All right, properly moved and seconded. Mr. Barrett, motion on the floor is to hold. Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jennifer Fine is here from Invest Atlanta. If anybody has questions, I'm sure she can help answer them now. Can you speak to the, sort of why this particular stipulation was put in for the West Side TAD when it was extended back in the early aughts? So that mic's not on. There you go.
There we go. Can you hear? Okay. So as mentioned, it was part of language when consent to extend was done. And it really speaks to anticipated future bond issuances. And it really speaks to, uh, anticipated future bond issuances and wanting to come, uh, to Fulton, back to Fulton County to get approval for projects anticipated to be funded with the issuance of new bonds, which we haven't done and we don't anticipate doing. This is increment. But we've been coming, uh, for the last several quarters with projects just out of an abundance of being conservative with that language, recognizing that that language isn't, is in there. But it is unique language and we feel it really was to address future bond issuances, since that is a pretty significant undertaking. Um, so yeah, so it, it, it not having the Fulton County consent for these projects puts all the projects at risk, unilaterally. Um, so that would be very problematic. Obviously, we're very committed and passionate about the projects. Um, these particular projects, these three are, have created and will create, will create rather, forty-six units or fifty-four units of affordable housing English Avenue Vine City and downtown and a building that's been vacant for twenty-plus years. So we feel like they're, they're pretty significant. There is universal support in the neighborhoods, um, for the project, so we're, you know, continue to seek your support, um, understand, uh, the request for more information. But, but yeah, it's more procedural at this point, but we certainly, you know, can entertain those conversations, but you know, I would emphasize the importance and the timeliness of these, of these projects and hope that we could address, you know, those, those conversations, you know, once we get these approved ideally, so we can have these, these folks finish their projects.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly would ask that we not hold this again. This would be the second hold on this, and there was plenty of time in the past two weeks to get whatever, whatever additional information anyone needed. I know, um, Commissioner Abdur-Raqman did meet with Ms. Fine, and I appreciate that, and I'm, I'm, from what I understand, you got your questions answered, Commissioner, and so I, I definitely appreciate you doing that. There, you know, I think if you could speak, um, just a little bit more about the timeliness of this, um, these, some of these projects have been already kind of just waiting for this final approval to get started.
Right, yeah. Of these three projects, two of them were approved in November of last year. The last one, one forty-three Alabama, was approved in February. Um, so they're moving forward. Again, TAD, TAD funding is gap financing. It, you know, it's filling gaps that can't be funded with traditional financing, be it debt or, or other equity. Um, so these projects are already advancing in some capacity, because there is some funding to do that. Obviously, the, the TAD money will be needed, um, you know, to help fill that void. So yeah, it would be abrupt and extremely detrimental to all the projects.
Yeah, and could you share specifically, um, the project that is being done by the woman who went through, um, the, uh, business training and, and developer training that Invest Atlanta offered?
Yeah, absolutely. That's the four-seventy-one English Avenue Project. The program that you're mentioning is called Community Builders. It was a demonstration project that we, we funded starting in about twenty-eighteen. We, we provided some seed capital from West Side TAD, about a hundred thousand dollars to do basically a small developer boot camp. It was a six or seven month educational training, if you will, really to engage folks from within English Avenue and Vine City that had real estate that was valuable, but they didn't have the resources to, to do anything with that real estate. So they weren't in a position to take advantage of all the opportunities that were happening then and are still continuing to happen. Uh, so we wanted to undergird that to give them, uh, financial training, development training, um, to get them in a position to do something with their property, be it their single-family home. They could build an ADU that would then create affordable housing and rent income for them. So this is a woman who's lived in the neighborhood for about twelve years. Um, she lives, it's a fourplex. She lives there. We awarded two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. She, uh, got an additional loan from the West Side Future Fund of a little bit more than that to do the project, so it will completely renovate those units, create an additional unit. She will continue to live there. She will rent out the other four units at about sixty percent of area median income. So we really view it as a win-win, not only to the legacy residents as a way to generate income and get value from their property that otherwise they wouldn't be able to, but also to provide access to affordable housing for other people within the neighborhood. So probably the hardest work we've done in that, uh, program. But yeah, this, this one we're super proud of because this is, again, a person who's come all the way through that program, taking advantage of, of West Side TAD to allow it to happen. Otherwise, it, it absolutely would not happen.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood the kind of projects we're talking about and the kind of developers we're talking about here. This is helping somebody who lives in the community to do good for the community, to provide more affordable housing, to make the community better. You know, I appreciate that, you know, every time we get into conversations about our contributions to the TADS, you know, there's, you know, there's this look at, you know, is this the right use of the money? Should we continue to be investing in this way? And I really think, um, as, as Jennifer said, I'm sorry, as Ms. Fine said, that it's perfectly great to have those conversations, but if we could approve these projects, the Invest Atlanta Board has unanimously already approved these projects. If we could just go ahead and approve this so they can move forward and then we can have those conversations before the next round, I would just really ask that we do that because I mean, these are hardworking folks who are waiting to, to really do good in these neighborhoods and to continue to hold this up just wouldn't be right.
Commissioner Arrington?
Uh, my question was answered. My, um, I, I guess to some extent, my question was really about the timeliness or any upcoming or impending deadlines of all, revolved around this approval.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so we can't execute contracts on any of our projects until we get approval. So our process is really two parts. Part one is getting approval from our board to award the funds. For every other TAD-funded project except West Side, we then enter into contracts and that then frees up the capital to go into the projects. In this case, obviously, we, we need ratification from Fulton County Board of Commissioners in advance of us being able to execute contracts. So the two smaller projects in English Avenue and Vine City, they've been building for years, so we won't be able to execute a contract and they won't be able to continue construction. One forty-three Alabama is, is a project that's in pre-development right now. We've got some stabilization work that has already started. The challenge there is the developer, um, that we've entered into, uh, in agreement with through an RFP process is going to apply for low-income housing tax credit, um, with Department of Community Affairs in May, so next month. Part of what will make that project much more competitive, because they only will approve two projects in the area, very, very competitive and very, very necessary to get at these levels of affordability. This partnership with a public entity like Invest Atlanta using TAD dollars will make the project score better. So be it not for this funding and them being able to include that in their application, it's very likely it won't get funded, which will make the project financially not feasible.
So these are some of the most blighted areas in the city, English Avenue and Vine City. I know that because I grew up there. I know that because my family grew up there, my father grew up there, um, and my grandmother lived, uh, in the area. Uh, and I think that we owe it to the citizens of Atlanta and the citizens of Fulton County to do what we can to help move forward development in these areas and to get rid of some of that blight. And I think, you know, any impediment to removing that blight in the area is, uh, ju- just doesn't make sense to me. Uh, so I'm, I'm supportive of moving forward. I certainly respect that Commissioner Ellis wants to get more questions answered. I, you know, I don't have a problem with that, but to the extent that this is the second time, I guess I don't know, I don't know why he wasn't able to get the answers or whether you all were able to reach out to him. But, you know, I'm, I'm happy to support moving forward, but uh, I, I would strongly recommend at least reaching out to Commissioner Ellis. I, I don't know how, how this vote will turn out, but I would strongly recommend working with him to try to get his questions answered, so that if it doesn't get approved today, that it can get approved the next time.
Alright, any other comments? Motion on the floor is to hold. As for information, there's a second. Our next meeting is on the sixteenth, and you mentioned a May timeframe, so we'll be meeting again on the sixteenth. Alright, motion on the floor is to hold. Please vote.
And the vote is open on the motion to hold. And the motion to hold passes, five yeas, two nays.
Next item.
Okay. I would appreciate if we'll reach out to you. That would be great. Thank you.
Twenty-five zero-two-six-nine, requests approval of resolution approving an agreement between Fulton County, Georgia, and the Fulton County Tax Commissioner and the City of Atlanta, Georgia, to provide judicial interim tax foreclosure services concerning municipal code enforcement lien, sponsored by Chairman Pitts.
Alright, uh, Dr. Ferdinand asked me to put this on there. Is he here? Dr. Ferdinand here? Alright, Commissioner Abdur-Raqman? We have a motion to approve.
Thank, thank you, Chairman. I'm, I'm gonna request that we hold this. Dr. Ferdinand is not here, and I do have just a few quick questions that he, he would need to answer, so I'm gonna ask, uh, if, if we can put this on hold.
Alright, the motion on the floor to approve by Commissioner Ivory, seconded by Commissioner Arrington, substitute motion to hold. Is there a second to this? Motion to hold? What?
Yeah, I just wanna be, yeah, I just wanted to be clear. My, I seconded the motion to approve. I just wanted to be clear.
Right, the motion, the original motion was to approve. And there's a substitute motion now to, uh, to hold by Commissioner Abdur-Raqman, seconded by Vice Chair Ellis. Commissioner, you want to speak again? Raqman, no?
No, sir.
Alright, Commissioner Ellis?
No, sir.
Alright, let's vote on the motion to hold.
And the vote is open on the motion to hold. And the motion to hold passes, six yeas, one nay. County Managers' Presentation and Discussion Items, twenty-five zero-two-seven-zero, External Affairs Presentation, twenty-twenty-five State Legislative Session Update.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. We are here to provide our second-to-last, um, update of this legislative session. We'll provide one more wrap-up at your next meeting. I'm just wanna ask the team to please pull our slides up. Um, but while we're doing that, Friday is signee die, so we are in the very, very last, um, hours really of the session. And, um, we've had a lot of movement and a lot of progress. Um, so next slide, please. So, um, the Senate, we'll start with the budget. The Senate passed their version of the budget on Friday. They have now, and they had a very significant changes from what the House passed. There is now a conference committee, so a committee of members from both chambers will now meet. They have already, um, they met for the first time, I guess, yesterday to start kind of hashing out what the final budget will be. One change that affects us is the, uh, North Fulton Behavioral Health Crisis Center, which was part of the DBHDD budget. That was at nine point four million in the House budget. The Senate reduced it down to two point four million. We have talked with members who are part of that appropriations process, who have assured us that they are continuing to advocate for the full amount. But we're watching this very carefully, um, that process. They'll be meeting and, again, having detailed discussions about what's in and what's out, uh, but we'll continue to monitor that carefully. Next slide, please. Um, our delegation has continued to meet weekly. They had their last meeting of the, of the session last Friday. There was a bill introduced, uh, since our last update, excuse me, um, House Bill, uh, eight-sixty-two, which would have, increased or would increase the salary of the sheriff. We do not, we have not seen that placed on a rules calendar. We're just monitoring that right now. Um, it has not, it was introduced fairly late in the session, so it would be very difficult to get all the way through by the end of session, but we have monitored that. Again, last, last meeting has already occurred, so we'll just, um, continue to engage our members individually. Next slide, please. Again, this is just a recap of our priorities. Um, we made progress on many of these, and some we'll continue to work on in the next, in the next session, which is the second part of this biennial, um, legislative session. Next slide, please. So our Judicial Resources for Superior Court, um, this was, um, House Bill, it was originally House Bill four-eighty-two. That language was appended to Senate Bill ten in committee. It passed out of committee by substitute, so, uh, we are now waiting for that to go into House rules, and we have, um, talked with, this was carried by Representative Trey Kelly. Um, we have talked with him. He assures us that that's something that he is still working to get out of that rules process. Jasmine, I wonder if there's anything else you would add to that? Okay, next slide. Um, the, by the way, as I, as you see things that are marked in green, that means that those have completed the last stage of the legislative process. So House Bill six-twenty-five, this was a local bill, was one of our priority areas to create two additional state court judgeships. So this has gone all the way through. Um, so we are very pleased. Unless it is vetoed for some reason, which we don't expect to happen, this would, um, go into effect, um, starting in July, I believe. Next slide, please. Um, Behavioral Health Investment, we've already talked about this. Um, our Crisis Center, um, funding was reduced in the Senate, but we're continuing to advocate for that. There was also funding, um, for forensic services in Georgia DBHDD's budget, um, including jail diversion. That funding, um, had some reduction, but there's still an investment in additional forensic beds. This is very important for us because, um, with individuals who have competency issues in their jail, this would provide additional beds for some of those individuals to receive care, hopefully be restored to competency, and, you know, again, make their way through that process. Next slide. I'm sure you all have read the, uh, news coverage about tort reform. Our specific priority was, um, related to, uh, premises liability, um, so won't belabor this, but this was one of the governor's top priorities. It was a very, very challenging debate, um, among the members, but this has, um, is now, um, awaiting signature, which could happen anytime now. Next slide. Uh, Next Gen nine-one-one, um, this is, um, implementation and oversight. Again, I won't read every word on here, but this has made it all the way through the process. And so we're expecting to see good things coming from that. Next slide. Uh, Digital Court Reporting, um, hold on one second. I have no on this one. Um, so this is on the Senate Rules Calendar today. If it passes today, um, it would go back to the House, um, for consideration. There is a pretty hefty number of bills on the Senate Rules Calendar, so it's unclear whether they will get to all of these today, but they, um, they're working to make their way down the list. So this one is in the, the final stages. Um, it still could go through, but there's a, still a few hurdles to cross over. Next slide. Um, House Bill ninety-two, which is the so-called House Bill five-eighty-one cleanup that we've talked about, this has made it all the way through the legislative process. We are going to check, because I just heard a few minutes ago that someone said the governor may have already signed this. The governor has signed it. Thank you, Jasmine, for late, late breaking news. Um, so, um, this is now official, um, and our tax assessor's team, they have been meeting and preparing for implementation of this. There are a number of administrative changes. We've had calls with the company that programs our tax system on what kinds of changes they will need to make. One very important change I would just wanna highlight quickly is related to, um, homestead exemptions and the filing of a homestead exemption application during the appeal process. Previously, once you, uh, got to April first, it was not possible to have a homestead exemption applied to that tax year. You would go into the next tax year. This has created sort of a new window of, um, applying during that forty-five-day appeal window, which occurs after notices are issued. So, um, that's So that's going to be very curious to see how that's implemented. There were a lot of, there are a lot of questions still at the staff level, as you can imagine. But that's one I think we would want to watch very carefully as we talk with Georgia Department of Revenue and others about how that will be, work in practicality. Because homestead exemptions are something that we certainly work very carefully on. And this also, quote, fixes the five-acre change that was part of House Bill five-eighty-one that extended homesteads to properties that are greater than five acres. There are more of those in Fulton County than we might expect. But obviously, in rural parts of the state, that's a much bigger issue. But it basically now has recapped the homestead at five acres. So properties greater than that would not receive that benefit for those additional acres. Again, we will have some additional analysis on this, working with staff, but wanted to talk about this one for a couple of minutes. Next slide, please. Senate Bill two-forty-four, this is another one that, there's been a lot of discussion about. Commissioner Barrett did testify in committee. Was that just last week? It seems so long ago. But this did pass out, there were, there've been a number of amendments to this bill. We have shared those with you. But this passed out of committee by substitute. I think it was actually two substitutes since we were last here. And it would, but it has not made it through House rules yet. And then if it does make it through House rules, it has to go back to the Senate. So it still has a couple of steps. Again, we're watching this one carefully. There, there were some amendments. ACCG did attempt to work with the bill sponsors. I, unfortunately, I don't think this bill is positive for Fulton County, but it is one that we're, we're still watching very carefully. Next slide, please. House Bill one-fifty-one. Again, there were amendments to this bill. This is the, what started as a North Fulton Development Authority. That is, it is no longer creating a new development authority, but it is creating a process for cities to opt out, specifically North Fulton cities, to opt out of activity from, or some activity from the Fulton County Development Authority. Again, this is one that has passed, it passed the House. It has to go back to the Senate for agreement to those revisions. This was carried in the House by the Speaker Pertham. And of course, the sponsor was Cinder Beach primarily. So we do expect that this will likely make it all the way through the process. Next slide. A couple of new homestead exemption bills that will be on the ballot this year. As you see, two referenda, one for Fulton County schools. And, and I believe these are both senior exemptions. Actually, both are for Fulton County schools with different age, age parameters for those two. So again, these would go on the ballot this year. It would affect Fulton County schools, starting with the twenty-twenty-six tax year. Next slide, please. We've had a few questions about Senate Bill seventy-four. This is related to libraries and, and specifically librarians. This bill did not make it out of committee originally, but in Senate rules, it was, the language was added to a different bill in the Senate rules process. And that is on the Senate rules calendar today. So we, if it passes Senate rules, it has to go back to the House for agreement to those amendments. And we can, you know, I think we've provided a summary here, and there has been a good bit of news coverage on this one. Next slide, please. Senate Bill eight-eighty-six was introduced. And I apologize, this is actually a House bill, is that correct, Jasmine? I apologize. It should say House Bill eighty-six. That's my error. I apologize. But this is related to payment of, using, use of tax dollars for payment of ransom to cyber criminals. This bill is unlikely to make it through this session, but it has been assigned to committee, so it would be active for the twenty-twenty-six legislative session. Next slide, please. Again, today is Legislative Day thirty-nine. Tomorrow is a committee work day, and then Friday is signee die. After that, the governor's veto deadline is May fourteenth. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we can take any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice Chair Ellis?
Yeah, my, my, I just had a request on that House Bill ninety-two, or HB five-eighty-one cleanup, whatever it is.
Yes.
Well, I guess one, one, so we think it's, it's been signed.
Yes.
So are, are all elements of this retroactive, if you will? I mean, it's within this tax year, right? But when did it get signed?
It was signed yesterday, too.
Okay.
It was signed yesterday. And so there are elements of this that do take effect immediately. Or, and as you said, some of them confusingly in the past, or I guess activities up until, things that have happened as of March first would be effective for this tax year.
I mean, I appreciate you all trying to interpret this and provide it to us, but in the end, you know, we've got two entities that are going to have to apply this stuff and do it. So really, my request, and this is maybe that Mr. Manager, if you could help kind of coordinate and facilitate this, but I really want to hear from the Tax Commissioner and Assessor's Office a report back that they are prepared, understand these things, and how they are going to implement them, and that we are going to stay on a schedule for our tax process. You know, rather than, you know, interpretive questions and all that sort of stuff. It is what it is. If it's passed, they've got to implement it. So that's really more of a request for, we all could collectively figure out when would be the time to do that, and really have generally a pretty short window, right? Because our notice of assessments typically go out at the end of May, is sort of has been our historical target, so that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'm one member, the least useful member of our tax team, but we do, I know that I, I can listen, and I have heard them, and there's preparation. So I think we could work with them to provide an update, for sure.
Great, thank you.
All right, other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Continue, Madam Clerk.
Bottom of page thirteen, under Justice and Safety. Twenty-five zero-two-seven-one, Superior Court Administration. Presentation, Fulton County Superior Courts Accountability Court, State Courts Recovery Treatment Court, and Magistrate Courts Misdemeanor, Mental Health Court Reorganization Plan.
Now, this is just a presentation, correct?
Correct, sir. We're not seeking approval today. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Steve Naraki, Strategy Office. I'm joined today by John Collins, our Accountability Court Director, Judge McBurney, and Chief Judge Glanville, Superior Court, Judge Taylor, Chief Judge of State Court, and David Summerlin, our Superior Court Administrator. We are before you today to provide an overview of the proposed reorganization of our accountability courts across Superior, State, and Magistrate Court. As you'll see in the presentation, the reorganization is a consolidation of all staff, services, and operations moving under Superior Court Administration. We began the formal reorganization steps in January in the adopted FY twenty-five budget, highlighting the consolidation and the organizational impact section of the budget message. Operating budgets were moved with the approval of the budget, and positions were identified to transfer to Superior Court. We look to finalize our administrative steps by funding the transferred positions at the upcoming April sixteenth BOC meeting via the Budget Soundings and Resolution. We're giving you this presentation today in advance of the budget soundings, so you are properly informed of the reorganization, and have, and we have the opportunity to address any questions you may have. And a final item to note, since the planning began of this reorganization back in the summer of twenty-twenty-four, we've had total cooperation and collaboration across the three courts and county administration with significant support from HR, finance, and behavioral health and developmental disabilities. Initiatives like this, reorganization of Accountability Court, are a prime example and model for future initiatives between county administration and our justice partners for successful projects. And with that, I'll hand it off to Chief Judge Taylor for a few remarks.
Hi, Wes Taylor. Nice to see everybody today. I'm going to be real brief, and it is just that I'm very excited for this process. It's been in the works for a while. And I will tell you that Superior Court and State Court continue to work well together to support each other. And what we believe is going to be the end result of this is a budget-neutral change of administration that will allow us to tap into resources where, before, we were in silos. And so you had duplicate services, duplicate resources that were being used not as efficiently as possible. And we now believe that we can move those across the courts. And I will give you just one, for instance, that is a big possibility that we are looking for in this, and that is better cooperation across the courts with respect to folks who are in need of an accountability court. For instance, we have DUI cases. Nobody's gotten hurt. They've just gotten multiple DUIs. Once it's your fourth intent, that becomes a felony. You don't have to hurt anybody. It's just a felony by operation of law. When that happens, they go to Superior Court. Typically, in Superior Court, those cases are, well, they're not murders. They're not, they're not those, those really extreme cases, but they are very dangerous folks for us to have in our, you know, driving on our roads. And so what we look forward to is to being able to cooperate across State Court and Superior Court to deal with those alcohol, drug, mental health issues, rather than, hey, this is just because this is your case. It's because of who you are and what your needs are. And so I really do appreciate all of the work of John Collins, of Judge McBurney, of Chief Judge Glanville, of Chief Magistrate Kirk. We really have worked together to, I think, bring to Fulton County a model that isn't in anywhere else in the state, but what the Council of Accountability Court Judges has been recommending for a long time, a model for us to best utilize our resources for the public safety and the public good. So thank you all very much. Happy to answer any questions that you all have to me when it's appropriate.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, my name is John Collins, and I am the Director of the Accountability Courts with Superior Court. First of all, before I jump in, I would also, in addition to our courts and our benches, I would like to say a big thank you to the County Manager's Office, the executive team, and the various departments in the county who have helped us along the way, putting this reorganization plan together and collaborated with us so well. Today, I want to review the purpose and goals of this reorganization plan, preview the organizational structure, the budget changes, service locations timeline, and finally wrap up with some of the benefits. Next slide, please. Right now, each of our accountability courts operate independently of each other under our three criminal courts. So Superior Courthouses are Felony Drug, Veterans, and Behavioral Health Court, while State Court presides over the Recovery Treatment Court, or DUI Court. And finally, we have our Misdemeanor Mental Health Court in Magistrates Court. What this reorganization looks to do is consolidate staff and resources for each of those accountability courts under Superior Court Administration. Now, to be clear, the jurisdiction for the cases will remain with the presiding judges and the courts. But the services provided to the participants of the program will all operate from Superior Court Administration. Next slide. Here are some of the steps that we are going to be taking. Steps one and two really outline the transition of resources and personnel from State and Magistrate Court to Superior Court Administration. Steps three and four outline the transition of management of all treatment services under Superior Court Administration. Step five, which we're particularly excited about, is the addition of a second program pathway to our felony drug program. And finally, we look to establish a single drug testing model across all the Accountability Court programs. Next slide. What will that look like? We're looking to establish a one-stop referral process. Again, we're looking to reduce case processing times, increase accessibility, make this a very easy referral process for all our justice partners. We're moving to a more flexible staffing model in that as we consolidate staff, we'll be more flexible and more responsive to the needs of each program should one caseload grow faster than another, short-term staffing shortages, things like that. We also want to maximize our funding potential, whether it's maximizing grant asks or working with vendors to secure the best volume pricing. And finally, we want to leverage the outstanding administrative support available in Superior Court Administration across all of our programs. Next slide. Here you can see, as I outlined a little earlier, this really demonstrates the current organization. As you can see, under each of our criminal courts, the programs are running independently. Each court is providing very similar services to the participants in each program. However, they're delivered under various different models present. What we would like to move to, next slide, please, is this model. Again, we're maintaining our programs. In fact, as I mentioned earlier, we're in the process of adding one. So we're able to still service the same population, the same demographics. However, what we're looking to do, and the, the orange bands across the bottom demonstrate, is move to a single model and a single point of service for each of the programs that allows us to be way more flexible. Next slide. The important point here is that this reorganization plan is budget-neutral. However, what we want to outline on this and the next slide are the current budgets or funds that we'll be looking to transfer and/or reallocate so that we can make this reorganization a reality. Next slide. Those funds on the previous slide will be utilized to implement the following changes, primarily the addition of treatment services to accommodate all five courts, and also pooling our current drug testing funding, whether it be county funding or grant funding, to a single model for drug testing. Next slide. Service locations. We currently have a location in North County at seventy-seven forty-one Roswell Road, and we have a number of locations in the city. The interim locations, we're looking to consolidate some of those locations, but still maintain our presence in North County. The future plan is for us to move our north location to the new facility at forty-seven North Point Parkway when it's completed. We have already been working with them to make that a reality. And also, we are looking to move our location currently on Jefferson Street over to one-thirty-seven Peachtree Street. We're excited about this prospect as well, where we can have our services, staff, et cetera, in one location. So not only are we organized as a one-stop shop, but we're actually working together in the same location. Next slide. Next slide. Again, I want to thank everybody at the county who has been so helpful in keeping us on track with this timeline. It is aggressive, but we are on track or ahead at this point, and we look forward to completing our reorganization with a July start date. Excuse me. Next slide. So just to wrap up, when this consolidation occurs, we're hoping that we will be able to provide that one-stop shop for all our justice partners, a single point of entry for all of our Accountability Courts. That's going to reduce process time, as I mentioned, but also reduce the time some folks are spending in jail awaiting entry or awaiting decisions. We'll have the enhanced operational efficiency that those pooled models allow us to bring to bear. We hope to increase the overall number of participants, something we've already started, maximize participants' success and retention. We believe we can bring the expertise we currently have in our Superior Court, DUI Court, and Misdemeanor Mental Health Court together to really provide the services, structure, and support that each person needs. We want to increase access to proven interventions. Working with folks with substance use and mental health issues who also find themselves involved in the justice system is a very specialized area and one in which we believe we have the expertise to bring to bear. And finally, successful participants have reduced recidivism. It's proven over and over again that those who enter receive the services they need, enter recovery, stabilize their mental health issues. We see them returning to the legal system less and less over the years. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Arrington followed by Commissioner Thorne. Where are the women today?
Well, that was my question as well. I was glad to hear Judge Taylor say that Cassandra Kirk has been working with you, Chief Judge Cassandra Kirk of the magistrate court. But she was obviously missed in the crowd of people that are before us today. And so, but I'm glad to hear that she's guys been working. She has been working with you all and with this team, certainly supportive of Accountability Court. I think it is a great way to help resolve cases and to move them faster and allow the system to concentrate on the cases that really need to be concentrated on and for these people to get the treatment that they need, right? So very supportive of Accountability Court, particularly knowing that all three courts are working together to get this done makes that even easier to support.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Thorne?
Yes, I concur with Commissioner Arrington. I'm very supportive of the reorganization. The net neutral is a bonus with that, and I appreciate all the work you've done, appreciate all the work the county team has done in trying to structure this in an efficient and beneficial way. We just got a legislative update from Ms. Corbett, and we're trying to get the funding for the Behavioral Health Center. Perhaps if we can sell the project better, if we know at 4700 North Point Parkway we'll have Accountability Court directly across from our new Behavioral Health Center, I think that could be a good sale promoting, funding that, and having a location just across the street, as well as using the resources there if you need experts in the field or consulting of any way.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioner Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to congratulate all of you for putting this together. It's great work. Thank you, Mr. Noraki, for your efforts in working with everybody and to all of you judges, Mr. Collins, Mr. Somaline as well. This is exactly the kind of thing we need to have happening across the board, where we're working out of our silos, looking for those ways we can, you know, serve more people without additional funds, but in a more efficient way. So I'm just very appreciative of the work y'all have done and just wanted to throw my thanks out there.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Abdo Rakman?
Chairman, I just wanted to say, given that all this testosterone is in front of me, I'm so glad that y'all didn't break out fighting, no wrestling match, no nuggies, none of that. So since you, you know, you know, when a whole bunch of testosterone get in the room that something breaks out? Come on now. But seriously though, gentlemen, I just wanted to say thank you for the great work that you all have done, and I am in support of this, and I'm so glad that no fights broke out. There was no estrogen in the room to stop it, so I think that's a great feat for all these gentlemen in front of us.
All right. Commissioner Ivory?
Thank you so much for being here, all the judges. Just one second, Marvin. Marvin, can just one second. Okay, thanks. I mean, Commissioner Arrington. I just wanted to ask if there were any other counties that are organized this way, and did you draw from some successful data to sort of begin? I wasn't here probably when this process began, but is this some model that has been done somewhere else that has, you know, reached great benefit?
So I will say that I think we're actually, with some of the larger counties in the state, we're actually a little ahead of the game, having even our current organization. Many counties have all of their, they don't provide the treatment services. A person has to seek the treatment services in the community while they're participating in the program. So I'd love to say that we're at the cutting edge, and that this is actually another step towards that, and we look forward to being able to provide that kind of data and hopefully see our model mimicked elsewhere.
Great, so we can be the leader in this model. Oh, that's wonderful. Then congratulations on that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I remind you of one thing? And that is, from a building perspective, this is very important. 137, as everyone knows, is the building across the street from us. It, from walking it with Mr. Collins and Mr. Noraki one afternoon, we can really, while I think Mr. Collins will be the anchor tenant, there are others from the justice partners that are looking for space and consolidating as much as we can there will give us proximity to the courts. Again, high use of that building. The folks that are in there are moving to the library, the central library. So I think it's a great step, and I want to thank you, Mr. Collins, for helping us envision what that space can be, and there's more to come.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Ellis?
Two points have been addressed. Number one was whether we were, whether it was anybody else who was sort of this far along with it. So thanks for that. And then also in the building. So one, you were saying that 137 Peachtree does work, and it is a good location for what we want to do here. We all feel confident about that? It's not a...
Yes.
Okay, all right. So that's good. I mean, I think this is long needed. I mean, I think for me, certainly the concepts and theories of Accountability Courts, I think are great, but this fragmentation of them certainly called into question in terms of the effectiveness of them in terms of a collective model. So I think, you know, definitely what we're going to is great. And I know we're, you know, in early stages. So one question before I get to my next question. On the mechanics of this, sort of the, there will be some, you did some budgetary stuff adjustments for this budget, but there's still got to be a sounding process, right? Or no?
Yes. Right? We should have to sound it, but it's already been accomplished in the budget.
All right. So the setup and the structure from a budgetary standpoint, y'all have already discussed that, and that was built in in January. And the soundings is just to effectuate it on the position piece?
Yes, sir, unless I misspeak.
To full Vice Chair, during the proposed budget, we sounded, or we built the proposed budget to effectuate the operating portion of the contracts. What comes now are the transfer of the positions and the associated money with those positions.
Okay. And collectively, you all are in agreement in terms of these positions movement into this, everybody's in agreement with. There's not like, okay, now this position's gone, and I need this position back. We're not going to have that kind of conversation.
That was question one. And there are no MOUs, right? All the legal experts that are here.
All right. Okay. And then on the forward-looking thing of it, which really goes back to my initial point, we've sort of gotten bits and pieces of, you know, the impact of Accountability Courts. Is it your objective sort of collectively now that it's brought under one to have a mechanism where you have some sort of like report back that sort of demonstrates the effectiveness of the individual courts and what's working and what may not be working?
Absolutely, Commissioner. We look forward to being able to provide that on a regular basis.
Okay, all right.
Yes. Very quickly, Vice Chair, that is something we can build into our monthly justice reporting. Once the consolidation has been fully effectuated, we start gathering data, we can report the results.
Okay. I think that would be great. Thank you.
We do report already to the Council of Accountability Court judges, to the CACJ, and we'll be happy to provide that same sort of accounting to y'all so that you can see what we're reporting to the state, and now it's going to be on this consolidated basis. So that...
Yeah, and I'm not saying there's certainly not been reporting. I know you have, just sort of just to bring it together from some consolidated viewpoint, you know, and so we've got the benefits of that and are looking at it sort of collectively. So do you want to say something, Judge McBurney?
Judge Taylor covered it. It's not really a monthly metric, so most people move through more slowly than that, purposely so, but certainly we need to be, we do track results. We need to be reporting them out, and that happens very effectively at the statewide level, but because we push it to the statewide level, we ought to push the county-level results to you all. So you can see that the investment, actually, it's one of the few criminal justice investments that yields economic gain for the participants and the community.
Yeah, yeah. So it's a good thing. And whatever the timeframe is on it, monthly, you're right, it's probably not right, whether it's quarterly or, you know, twice a year or whatever it is. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ivory?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will this have any effect immediately on participants in these programs? Will there be some sort of effective communication about this transfer?
Absolutely. Part of our larger reorganization plan is to communicate with those folks. We're trying to minimize as much as possible any disruption to their services. In fact, we look to increase services for many folks, but we're really looking, at least in the short term, to maintain their current schedules, not upend anything for them as we move to this consolidated model. But we will absolutely, we've already taken a few steps to communicate this with both staff, with the participants, and obviously with any future participants as well. Judge?
If I could add to that real quick. We've been, John and I, these folks, we've all been working together now for a while. This didn't just happen overnight. So we've been working together for a while, and I can tell you that from my perspective, we've already seen benefits because we have had much better communication before, I'd say, two years ago, we didn't talk much at all. And so we would have cases that came in and were really, they were, they had heavy drug use issues. Well, I can't really deal with that in my DUI court. We're geared towards alcohol and marijuana use. So if it's cocaine, methamphetamines, anything like that, our treatment is just isn't geared towards that. So what we've had since then are folks who have come in with those kind of characteristics with this model that we've been working on, working together. We've already streamlined getting folks the treatment that they need regardless of whether they were in State Court, Superior Court, or what have you. So I expect, once this is done, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be great because I've already seen, and our participants have already seen benefits of a streamlined approach in getting them where they need to be. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
I would just add that I hope that when this passes in the next meeting, and I feel confident that it will, that on the administration side, that somebody will make an announcement about this being a great change for the Fulton County Courts and that it can get some, you know, good press for it because I think we are leading in something, and it would be terrible for nobody to know that we're doing it.
I don't know if it's monthly or quarterly, Council of Accountability Court judges newsletter that goes out statewide, it's sort of a rarefied audience, but at least it's all the participants. And this would be the kind of story that would be a lead there, that it's an innovation. And so certainly administrators of Accountability Court programs statewide will be learning about this change, and then they'll be reaching out to John to say, how can we try to mirror something like this, assuming the jurisdiction's able to support it?
All right. Anything else? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Continue, Madam Clerk.
On page 14, Commissioners' Presentation and Discussion Items 250272, Discussion and Approval of Payroll Deductions for Employees' Organizations Sponsored by Chairman Pitts.
All right. Mr. Herman, would you come on up, please? At our last meeting, you may recall that a Mr. Alan Lee, who represented the Federation of Public Service Employees, came before us and spoke during public comment. And prior to that, State Representative Tanya Miller and I have been talking about this union for some time, and she apparently represents them, and they are seeking to be approved by the Board of Commissioners after going through this process. It's a very convoluted process. By this board at some point, not today, so I'd like today is to discuss where we are and how we got to this, and we need to provide the board with a copy of the resolution because it is horrible. Needs to be rewritten to simplify it. But if you would explain where we are at this point, Mr. Herman would be helpful.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ken Herman, Chief HR Officer, Fulton County. On February 5th, the county manager received a copy of the letter from the Georgia Federation of Public Service Employees requesting to be recognized by the county to begin seeking membership and having deductions from those members pulled from their respective checks and go into the respective organization. Reviewing the county ordinance, which is Article 2154-36, there's a specific process that we have to go through in order to bring this item before the board. And as the chairman alluded to, while this document was last touched in 2010, we believe that there's some opportunities for modification to make it a little bit more streamlined. As the ordinance reads today, it connotates that the employers, the union or employer association has to first get to a 50-plus-one percent membership of members before it can come to the Board of Commissioners to seek approval, which, as you could imagine, is kind of counting...
That's 50% plus one of eligible...
Of eligible employees, depending on the population. So for example, if this is a union that only represents PBX operators, and we have 10, they have to first solicit at least, get at least six to sign up before they can start this process of coming to the Board of Commissioners. And in addition to that, then the county manager through the HR office is responsible for conducting an analysis of, you know, what is it going to cost to the county to get this set up? So we look at, you know, how much is it going to cost to set them up in the payroll system? How much is it going to cost if, in fact, that entire population signs up and now payroll deductions are coming out and the labor costs? And we do that analysis. And we've done, we've done all of that today in anticipation of this discussion. So we know that, in talking with the union representative for Georgia Federation of Public Service Employees, their intention is to go after a broad population of the employees that are non-exempt, which is roughly right now around 2,400 non-exempt employees scattered throughout the county. If they're successful, they first have to get to that 50% plus one, so roughly about 1,000 employees plus one to get to that population. We know that it's going to cost us about $42 to set them up in the payroll system and another $84 so we could start, set them up as a vendor. And if the entire population that they are trying to attract is able and joins that organization, it will generate about $50,000 for them. And because we have set fees for various vendors that are doing payroll deductions, it would generate about $14,000 for the employee services fund. As of right now, Commissioner, just for your information, we currently have about six unions in the county actively with our employee population and one employer association, and it's representing close to 808 employees across the county. So in my conversation with the representative this morning, there was one last piece that we wanted to... we wanted to validate, is whether or not they had to be registered with the Secretary of State. In our research, we can see the other six unions are there, registered and listed, but they are not. So that's one last piece that we have to work on with this organization before we bring it, before the board for final approval and adoption at some point. But as it relates to the ordinance, again, this is my opinion, I do believe that working with the county attorney's office and getting some input from the Board of Commissioners, it could be fine-tuned to a manner where if in fact our employees or if in fact organizations want to pursue employees for membership and representation, it can be opened up in that conversation. And because what's happening, Commissioners, in my mind, it's kind of like the cart before the horse. How can the union organization secure the membership if in fact they have not been recognized by the Board of Commissioners as yet? So it's kind of, I don't know how they were able to accomplish it in the past. And, you know, we've been working with Madam Clerk to determine, you know, what has happened in the past relative to that. But again, we will submit some resolution modifying the ordinance or recommending the ordinance change to make it a little bit more seamless, but this is where we are today with the Georgia Federation of Public Employees.
All right.
Public Service Employees.
Commissioner Arrington?
Yeah, I spoke with Alan Lee. He, and he stated in his last meeting that only one word needed to be changed in the ordinance. Did you speak with him? Did you hear him say that last week?
I talked, well, I missed, I missed his conversation last week and I'll probably have to go back and reach, review that tape. But when I talked with him, he did acknowledge that we do have to have some change. He didn't tell me what that one word was, Commissioner.
Okay. You know, I don't have any problem supporting this. You know, I think it's just a matter of working out the details. It sounds like you and your team have been on it and it sounds like, though, we need to have the county attorney speaking with his attorney or someone. And according to the chairman, the whole resolution probably, then it, it's probably not the only one. I can think of another one, like the ethics one, that needs to be completely rewritten. So, you know, we have a lot of antiquated rules in Fulton County that all need to be relooked at. And just because we've been doing something that way for 40, 50 years doesn't mean that it doesn't need to change now. So I look forward to the changes to the resolution so that it will make sense and that this group can move forward in doing what they're doing. I wonder, how does this affect the other groups? And, you know, are they all going to be lobbying for different positions or are these, they're not going after the members from the other groups, right?
Commissioner, from what I understand from this organization, the population that they're going after is all 2,400 non-exempt employees, which could have some overlap related to the police association and correction officers that are also part of other existing units.
So then I would recommend that we should, you know, talk to those other five or six unions to understand their positions, right? So that everyone can move forward. I mean, I, you know, I don't have any problem with organized labor, but I think everyone needs to be on the same page. And I don't know if it makes sense that the unions are competing. I know some of them, typically they work in certain service industries, right? And they're targeted towards a certain area, right? Electric, IBEW is for electrical workers, right? And so if you're a lawyer or someone, you're not going to be in IBEW. So maybe it's just having an understanding of the differences between the different unions and knowing that, you know, because I don't know if it makes sense for them to have competition amongst each other, but I guess if that's what they want, then, you know, that's good. It's a free, at least for now, it's a free country.
Christopher Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a quick question, well, two, I guess. What's the timeline? Like, what are the next steps? What's the timeline on moving this forward?
Well, the timeline is following it, working with the county's attorney's office, trying to at least get something in front of the board for the next board meeting. Because between then and now, we should be able to reconcile whether or not this organization need to be registered with the Georgia Secretary of State. And if Dan says yes, then that's easy. If Dan says no, it's easier, easier after then. But it's just the tweaks to the ordinance so that we can level a playing field, for lack of a better term.
And my other question is, you rattled off some numbers, the ordinance number, the dollar amounts and such. Could you maybe provide like a one-pager summary sheet of kind of where you are on this process now? I think that would be really helpful, just so that, you know, we can do some interim research before the full thing is ready to go.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, other comments? Thank you, Mr. Herman. Madam Clerk?
25-0273, Discussion, Approximately 800 Authorized Funded Vacant Positions Sponsored by Chairman Pitts.
Okay, Mr. Herman, break out those 800-plus, approximately 800 employees. How many have been vacant for one year, two years, three years, and so forth? What that means from a dollar? And also, I guess everybody saw the papers, I think I sent it to everybody, where there were right under 2,500 CDC folk who were let go, so that should be a target for us.
Yes, good afternoon again, Commissioners. And Mr. Chair, since our conversation, the numbers have shifted dramatically. As of the last report, when we talked, Mr. Chair, we had 41 general fund, full-time vacancies that had, that have been vacant for more than 12 months, which has a dollar value of $2.1 million. Since then, we have seen a significant uptick in activities that are related to some or not all of those positions. And I think what has happened in, Commissioners, is if you recall, when you adopted a 2025 budget, part of that budget adoption had, I think what we called an attrition factor, roughly about a 30% attrition factor on vacant positions that were vacant as of, Sabrina, I think, November 8th, or November 8th. So what some departments may have opted to do, and it's clearly now that we've seen an uptick in activity, is 30% of a position is you wait your first three months of the year and then you could fill the position. So now you're starting to see them start to pick up activity in the month of March and April. So that 41 of 2012 general fund, full-time positions, where we had no activity for the last 12 months, has now been dwindled down to about eight. So I have currently eight positions that are general fund, permanent, full-time, that I have no activity for the last 12 months on. And that has now brought the dollar value down to around $450,000, Mr. Chair.
Any beyond, well, you said one year, 12 months?
Well, this is 12 months or more, so it's 12 months or more. It's only eight now that I have no action for, for the last 12 months or more.
Okay, I'd like to see a further analysis of that, of whatever that, the total number is, because, you know, with federal funding for social service organizations, and we have a bunch of them, being cut, we're going to need every dime that we can get our hands on to fund some of those organizations that speak to our mandated services. All right, Christopher Arrington?
So, Mr. Herman, I always want to make sure I understand because the agenda item is talking about 800 vacant and open positions. But I thought I just heard you say that there were 41 and that based on the activity, the 41 is not, no longer even available. And now there are only eight open positions? Is that correct?
I apologize if I wasn't clear, Commissioner Arrington. So there are 800 vacant positions, both general and other funds available.
You leave it out the word authorized.
Unauthorized. What the chairman asked me to speak on today was this smaller population of that 800 that has been vacant more than 12 months or more. So the 12 months or more bucket in, on the general fund and solely on the general fund that is authorized by this board was 41 when we originally talked in the middle of, I think last week. But since then, we've started to see some activity and now of that 41, the only, there's only eight general fund, permanent positions that are vacant for more than 12 months that I have no activity on. So that's what the eight is on.
Okay, that's eight, not 800. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight positions.
Open, vacant for more than 12 months, yes. There are 800 positions that are vacant between 12 months or less.
All right, and what's, what's, why are you making a distinction in 12 months?
That was a conversation that I had with the chair, that he wanted me to focus on those that were 12 months or more. And I assume, based on the comment that he just made about potentially with the impact with the federal dollars, potentially moving some of that funding from those vacant positions to other areas within the county where it might be better situated. And I don't want to speak for the chairman.
All right, so you don't, in your day-to-day job, you don't distinguish those open positions by 12 months or less, or 12 months or longer?
No, sir.
And how long have you been here?
10 years.
Okay, and so I guess the goal is to say if these positions have been open and vacant for 12 months or longer, maybe we need to consider putting the money somewhere else?
That's my assumption.
That's, yes, sir.
Okay, and, you know, I think, Mr. Chair, that, I don't know that we can just count Xs and Os and just say, oh, this position has been open. We've got a lot of open vacant positions in the county attorney's office. And just because in the, I think there's more analysis that goes into it than just whether it's been open for 12 months or not. I mean, a lot of the, a lot of the jobs that we have, there probably are a lot of jobs at the sheriff's office and at the jail that have been open for 12 months. And it's, it probably has to do with the amount of pay that they're being offered, the fact that they're not getting double time when they're getting triple time in the cab. Like, there's so many other relevant factors, but it sounds like a, you know, 800, 2,500 people laid off from, I guess locally, from CDC, 800 open positions, 41 that's not, that have been open longer than a year, that's now reduced to eight is opening longer than a year. I think our biggest challenge with filling positions is that people are overworked and underpaid. And I hope that we can also have a discussion about raising the minimum salaries so that these jobs will be more attractive and that they won't remain open for 12 months or longer. The reason a job remains open for 12 months or longer is because nobody wants it, because it's not, it's either too much work and they're not getting paid enough to do it. And so, you know, there are unintended consequences with everything. And I wonder if we don't create a different problem by taking that money away from where it is rather than offering competitive salaries to people so that the positions can be filled.
Christopher Barrett?
I just had a quick question. The eight, you said it was eight left?
Yes.
And they are, does that include our personal staff?
There is one personal staff position on that eight, yes.
Okay. I was just curious if you had the departments for the eight that are in that category?
Yes, Commissioner. So we have the at-large office, IT, one position in the sheriff's department, Public Works, Dream, and one position in Behavioral Health, and another one, and another one in the tax assessor's office.
Gotcha. I just was curious if they were sort of focused in one area, but it sounds like it's just sort of scattered.
It's scattered, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Ellis?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Well, staffing's a pretty complicated thing and, you know, multifaceted, so I'm not, we're not going to break this down in the next 10 minutes. But just when you're getting to that eight number, you're, let's say there's a basket of like, you know, open 20, you know, 50 positions of a particular type, right? And, you know, we have historically, you know, every year we're having, we reach the end of the year and we've got 50 positions of that same open type. But people are continuously hired and leaving within that. You're not including that in those eight.
No.
Okay. So we do have other areas where we're perpetually not filling positions, like over an extended period of time, right? But that's not captured in this eight. So in theory, you have a lot of jobs where positions have been sitting out there for longer than 12 months.
Right, and this eight is, there has been no churn or activity within this population.
Right, but it's just sort of one, sort of singular positions as opposed to there are 50 of these, right? So it's sort of a misnomer, I think, the way that you've got that presented that way. But, but clearly, we historically have a large number of positions open. And we run in the county, you know, the way we're running the county, it does sort of beg the question of, you know, are there places where these positions should just be reduced and the funds either redeployed or, you know, our budget reduced accordingly, you know, given the nature of kind of the way the budgetary challenges that we face. So I think we should continue to work on that analysis.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, is anything other than executive session?
No further items.
All right, entertain the motion to recess and lunch, executive session, items, real estate, litigation, and personnel.
And the vote is open? Then the motion passes unanimously. And the motion passes unanimously.
All right, without objection, we will resume the regular order of business. Items from executive session, Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have several action items from executive session. Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item four?
A motion to approve by Commissioner Ivory, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Let's vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item five?
A motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item six?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
I got Thorne and Barrett.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item seven?
All right, favorable motion by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item eight?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ivory, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item nine?
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Cast your vote, please.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item ten?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Cast your vote, please.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item ten?
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Cast your vote, please.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item ten?
All right, favorable motion by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item ten?
All right, favorable motion by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item ten?
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Cast your vote, please.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item ten?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item eleven?
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Arrington, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item twelve?
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Arrington. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, five yeas, one nay.
Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item thirteen?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Ivory. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve the request for representation in item fourteen?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Thorne.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to deny the request for representation in item fifteen?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Arrington. Please vote. Oh, wait a minute, Mr. Chair. It's a motion to deny. I'm sorry, deny, correct. Correct that, Madam Clerk.
Okay, the vote is open for the motion to deny? And the motion to deny passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve the request for settlement authority in item sixteen?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
And finally, is there a motion to approve the request for settlement authority in item seventeen?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
No further action items from executive session?
All right, any other items, Madam Clerk? No further items. No further items that come before us today. We are adjourned. Thank you.
For a written transcript of this meeting, or if you need reasonable accommodations including this communication in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the clerk to the commission's office at 404-612-8232.